Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon and welcome. Thank you for joining us today. Today for our regularly scheduled board meeting. It is Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, 5:00 p.m. We will call this meeting to order. Good afternoon, board colleagues. Thank you all for joining us this afternoon. Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Gohean, and to all of our staff, welcome. Great to see all of you, those that are in person and those that are joining us online. And to any guests that we have with us this afternoon, thank you for joining us and for being with us at our board meeting. As we do at every board meeting, I will read our board norms and protocols. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Again, welcome to everybody. It's great to see all of you here. It's a great week as we welcome all of our staff back at the buildings and in the district and as we prep for this upcoming academic year. So, a lot of exciting things happening. So, again, welcome. We'll go ahead and get started with our meeting. Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve today's regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, we're going to jump right into our agenda. We've got an exciting start to today's board meeting. Today, we get to honor and swear in our new officers that are joining us for this upcoming school year. It's great to see all of you, men and women, standing with us. And I will hand this off to Chief Nicholson, who will share some remarks and tell us a little bit about our officers. It's great to be able to do this during a regular board meeting, to be able to welcome you and to swear you in and to, as we kick off a new academic year. So, again, welcome. Thank you, and we're so excited to have you. Board members, once they take their oath of office, we will take a group picture of our newly sworn-in officers, and then we'll ask the board to come and join our officers so that we can take a group picture with them as well. So, don't go anywhere after you are sworn in. So, Chief, thank you for this opportunity and welcome.
Great, thank you. So, good evening, board, and thank you for allowing me this time to introduce you to our newest group of police officers. When I took over as chief of police last year, I made a commitment to bring the police department up to full staff as quickly as possible while not sacrificing the quality of officers that we hire just to fill a vacancy. So, I'm excited to announce tonight that we've been fully staffed for a couple of months, and tonight you get to hear a short bio about each of these officers while they're being called forward, and they will later be sworn in by Mr. Lopez, our board president. So, there will be three officers that will not be here tonight. However, I'm still going to read their bios so you know who they are. So, the first officer who is not here tonight is Officer Mitchell Baker. Officer Baker was born and raised in California and worked at NASA as a security police officer for eight years at Edwards Air Base. He was a police officer for the Air Force Department of Defense in Palmdale, California, moved to Pennsylvania where he worked for the Bureau of Prisons, and eventually transferred to the United States Penitentiary in Lebworth, Kansas, which is where we picked him up from. Our next officer is Officer Bradley Boyd. Officer... So, Officer Boyd is a dedicated police officer with a passion for serving his community. Officer Boyd brings nearly eight years of police experience to the KCKPS Police Department. With his distinguished career marked by bravery and service, he has been rewarded with two Bronze Breasts of Valor from the Wichita Police Department and earned the prestigious Citizenship Award from his fraternity, Iota Phi Theta. Beyond his work in law enforcement, Brad embraces a diverse range of interests and hobbies. An avid traveler, he loves exploring new places and experiencing different cultures. When not on the move, you can also find him in the kitchen cooking or chauffeuring his children around to games and practices. As a firm believer in servant leadership, Brad has extended his commitment to public service beyond policing. Currently, he is the president of the Latha School Board and plays an active role in shaping educational policies and advocating for the best interests of students and teachers in that district. He's also representative of the Kansas House of Representatives, the 49th District, and works tirelessly to bring positive change and progress for his constituents here in Kansas. With an aspiring dedication to both his professional and civic duties, Officer Boyd strives to continue to make a lasting impact on the lives of those he serves. Last but certainly not least, Officer Boyd does all this with a love and support of his wife and their four children. And by the way, I forgot to mention this. Officer Boyd will be assigned to Bridges Day School. Officer Hanif Gray. Officer Gray will be assigned to Washington High School. Officer Gray has been in law enforcement for over 15 years and came to us from the University of Kansas Hospital Police. He's a graduate of the University of Central Missouri and is currently pursuing his master's degree in emergency management. He quotes, "I have a lovely wife, Ronnie, and four rambunctious kids. My goal is to leave a positive mark on society, and I feel that KCKPS Police Department affords me that opportunity." Officer Peyton Campman. Officer Campman will be assigned to the main library, and he joins us from the Kansas City International Airport Police. He graduated with an associate's degree and a high school diploma at the same time, two years later completing his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He says that he has always... Education has always been a core value for him, and he firmly believes in lifelong learning. He wants to share what he's learned and help the students stay safe and find their goals in life. Officer Ryan Siegfried, who will be assigned to Wyandotte High School.
All right.
Officer Siegfried was proudly raised by his grandparents and credits them for him being the man he is today. At 19, he enlisted in the United States Marine Corps Reserve and served four years as a battle tank operator. Siegfried started his law enforcement career as a jailer for the Rio Alto PD and then became a director of security for a Jewish temple. He also worked in executive protection at Fox Studios and was an explosives detection canine handler all in California. Siegfried moved to Missouri to join the Federal Bureau of Prisons as a correctional officer. He says that he realized that his calling was to be a police officer within the school district and that the school district gave him this opportunity to be a police officer with us. Officer Robert Myers could not be here tonight, but he's going to be assigned to Schlegel High School. Officer Myers is originally from Wyandotte County, went to Piper High School. Myers is married to his high school sweetheart, and they have been married for 14 years. They have two children together, both boys. One is 13 and one is eight. Myers is a 10-year veteran of the United States Coast Guard and was also an employee of the Wyandotte County Sheriff's Office prior to coming to us. He says that he really enjoys working with and building positive relationships with kids, and the police department affords him that opportunity. Officer Stephen Chevalier, who will be assigned to Harmon High School. Officer Chevalier was born and raised in Brooklyn, New York. He comes from a Haitian-American family that consists of nine brothers and sisters, of which he is youngest. Officer Chevalier majored in criminal justice in college and is fluent in French Creole. Chevalier has worked as a youth facilitator in a community school in the South Bronx and as a police officer at the Kansas City International Airport Police. He plans to use all of his various skills and knowledge to help shape and guide the youth of this school district and bring a successful and bright future to our students. Officer Darren Smith will be one of our patrol officer on the newly created night shift. Officer Smith started his career in 2018 at the Mesa County Colorado Sheriff's Office as a detention deputy and was a member of their special operations response team. He's also a veteran of the United States Marine Corps and the Colorado National Guard. He says that his wife and him made the decision to move to Kansas in late '22 when he stumbled upon this opportunity to be an SRO with our district. His wife, Michaela, two boys, Gage and Jimmy, have fully supported the decision to join this police department, and he looks forward to a meaningful career here in the district. Officer Marcus Nash will be assigned to Eisenhower Middle School. Officer Nash is a Wyandotte County native. He graduated from Schlegel High School in 2012. He's also a former airport police officer. You're starting to see a theme here, right? (laughing) He has four years of corrections experience and three years of public safety experience at the Truman Medical Center. He also has an eight-year-old son. What attracted him to the KCKPS Police Department is that he's from the community. His family is from the community. He thought it would be nice to serve in an area where he grew up. Officer Yasmeen Nichols will partner... Oh, I forget who I said now. At Harmon High School. She's going to be assigned to Harmon. Officer Nichols recently graduated from Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center and has worked for a patrol officer with the Kansas City Kansas Community College. She was also a former SSA within our district. She's a native of California but grew up in Wyandotte County and also graduated from Schlegel High School in 2012. She loves music, Hispanic food, wrestling, football, and riding her horses. Officer Jacob Hunt will be on patrol nights, and he could not be here tonight, but he was raised in Phoenix, Arizona, and is nearing four years of public safety experience. He relocated to Kansas after moving from Des Moines, Iowa. He lives with his significant other and their three pets. In his off time, he enjoys kayaking, is very family-oriented. Says he has a passion for working in the mental health field and enjoys seeking solutions to resource and bringing resources to problems facing our community today. Officer Daphne Salias. Daphne will be assigned to Central Middle School, and she's our most recent graduate from KLEC. So, she's been with our department for nearly two years as an SSA and as a police officer. She graduated, like I said, from KLEC in May. She is bilingual in Spanish and English, and she says that it is extremely rewarding to work with and mentor our students. I look forward to continuing my career as a school resource officer and helping inspire others.
Thank you very much, Chief Nicholson, for the introduction of our esteemed guests with us today, and we welcome you on behalf of the board and our great district. We are excited to have you work with our young people to serve as role models. So, tonight I have the honor to be able to swear you in as you take on this new role, and we are very excited and proud to have you serve our district. So, please, repeat after me, and if you wouldn't mind raising your right hand.
(mimicking a child's voice)
On my honor...
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge...
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity...
My integrity.
My character...
My character.
Or the public trust...
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage...
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself...
To hold myself.
And others...
And others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States...
I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Kansas...
And of the state of Kansas.
My community...
My community.
And the agency that I serve.
And the agency that I serve.
Congratulations and welcome to Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. We are so proud and honored to have you. And as Chief shared with us tonight, this is a very special calling. It's a different type of calling to work with our young people, to build relationships, to build trust, not just with those young people in those buildings that you're serving and with their families. So, we are honored and we are privileged, and we are here to support you so that we can better serve and protect and keep our district and our students safe and make sure that they feel safe and have those trusting relationships with you. So, thank you for all that you'll do. I'll open up in case any other board members would like to share a word or two to our newly sworn-in officers.
I'd just like to say congratulations. It is an honor to be here, to watch you being sworn in, and I know that with everything that you're going to be doing, the best is yet to come for the district, for yourselves, and for our students. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Additional board members?
I'll just add, there's a couple of troublemakers in this group, but y'all know who I'm talking to. But I also just, in a time such as this, our thoughts and prayers are with the officer from Fairway, but I also know that it is a commitment that you both personally make but also that your families make, and you never know what any day will hold. So, I just want to extend my appreciation and my gratitude, not only for you for making this commitment, but for all of our officers that choose every day to continue to protect and serve in our communities, that you are making a difference, and we truly appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Again, congratulations. Thank you and welcome. So, at this time, we'll ask you to step here in the middle. We're going to take a group photo of you all, and I'll ask my board colleagues and our superintendent to join you for a picture with everyone. Thank you. Thank you. We will continue with our agenda. Next agenda item, item number three is our consent agenda. Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item, we will hear from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few quick announcements. First, I want to say we hosted the 24th Annual Back-to-School Fair last Saturday here at Central Office, and the turnout was great. We gave away nearly 22,000 backpack supplies and resources to our students and their families, and there were 342 volunteers and vendors on site. Thank you to Crystal Watson and the Foundation of Excellence, our community partners, district staff, and volunteers for planning and the hard work that they put in to make this event possible. Saturday was fun and fulfilling for those who were able to attend and participate. Last week, I, along with board members and district staff, had the pleasure of welcoming over 150 new staff members to Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools on Wednesday, August 2nd. I want to thank all the departments that contributed to the planning and welcoming of our new staff members, and we look forward to on Friday, to welcoming back all of our staff at the opening of Schools Commencation... I'm sorry, it's Thursday. It's not Friday, it's Thursday. August 10th at the Monarch Stadium. Transportation will be provided, shuttle services, and everyone should have gotten information about that. It will be held at Monarch Stadium, and we look forward to everyone coming together and celebrating the start of the new school year. This is just a reminder to our families that next Monday and Tuesday will be our family advocacy days. You should be hearing something from your schools directly if you haven't already done so, but that is an opportunity for the schools just to check in, to see how summer went for your students, so that we can start the school year off on a positive note, making sure that we can address any things that may have come up and make the necessary adjustments for all of our students to feel welcome and feel excited about returning to school. I want to thank the Kansas City, Kansas Police Department, Wendy Medina, and Captain Navarro for inviting me last week to be a guest on their Facebook Live program to talk about plans for back-to-school and programs that we're implementing, and we look forward to connecting with them in the future as well. And this is just a reminder to everyone, the first day of school, it's next week. On Wednesday, we will welcome back our K through 5th graders at the elementary level and at the secondary level, our 6th and 9th graders, and then all students will return to school on next Thursday. If you have any questions or still having... Trying to figure out where your student needs to go, you can reach out to our Welcome Center, and someone will assist you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a few announcements on my end. Board, don't forget, it should be on your calendar, but just a reminder, we do have a special board meeting scheduled for August 30th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That will be at Junior Achievement. More details in terms of the address and logistics will be sent out, but I just want to make sure that that's on everyone's calendar. Also, I'll be emailing you later tonight or tomorrow, if we could find some time, to squeeze in a special meeting to approve some new hires before the start of the school year or the first day of school. So, be looking out for an email from either myself or Ms. Smith on that to try to get a date where we could do that. Next week, there is a finance committee meeting next Tuesday, 4:30 to 5:30 p.m., for anyone interested in zooming into that and watching that. Just a reminder, we did have a facilities... A special board meeting yesterday where we had an overview of the facility's master plan. Again, I just do want to give a shout-out to our facilities committee, to Ms. Russell, the chair, and to all the members of that committee, including staff and everyone who participated in gathering all that data and information. There was a lot to share, so if you have a chance, I'd invite you all to take a look at it and review it, just so that we're all better informed in what our facilities are looking like and where issues... Areas that we're doing great and areas that maybe we can improve on a little bit. So, again, thank you to everyone who's participated in that, and that was a great conversation, great... Lots of information that we had yesterday. I do, again, as Dr. Stubblefield mentioned, just welcome to all of our staff who are joining us again, to new staff and returning staff. We're grateful to have all of you back and excited for Commencation this week, to just feel the energy. So, thank you to everyone for choosing Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools this year, and we look forward to having our students and all the smiles and the joy in the classrooms and in the hallways starting next week. So, it's always an exciting time of year for all of us. So, thank you for everyone, for all the work that you've put into making this happen. It seems like summer's gone by super quickly this year. Lastly, board, I just... Two other things. Just a reminder, KASB has their annual conference in November. If you are interested and have not shared with Ms. Smith your interest, please let her know so that she can make sure to register you for that conference. It is November 10th through 12th, I believe, but if you have an interest and have not been registered, please let Ms. Smith know so we can get you registered for that. Additionally, I shared at the last board meeting that I was going to attend the Kansas Hispanic-Latino-American Affairs Commission, the Governor's Commission, and I just wanted to quickly just share a few pieces of things that we discussed. I served on a panel, on an educational panel, with another board member from another district in the state of Kansas and a couple of other teachers who were all on the panel, talking about the state of education, particularly in the Latino community. It's a great conversation about how we can continue to engage families in their student and child's education and how that looks so very different and unique when you talk about different cultures and ethnicities and backgrounds and traditions, and I think that holds true in KCKPS where we have so many different cultures, so many different races, such a diverse district, so many different languages spoken. Opportunities for us to engage with all families, to make sure that they all feel included and welcomed and a part of their child's education. So, I'm excited to see some of those things. I know we're doing some things already to make sure that that's happening in our schools. So, thank you to everyone for that. Also, we just talked about, you know, Ms. Page talked about the open enrollment that's coming down the pipe and what that means for students and families, and I think we as a district need to continue that conversation and be prepared of what that will mean for us as a district, as a community, and make sure that we're making the best decisions that we can for all of our students and families. And I think I will share that I had several folks come up after the panel and just ask some probing questions about things that we're doing here in KCKPS. Shout-out to our communications team. They really enjoy some of the website and some of the things that they're seeing come out from our communications, the family engagement pieces, the community engagement pieces. I think, Ms. Russell, I know you're such a huge advocate for making sure that students are centered in all decisions and just at the table and making decisions, and I think that is being heard loud across the state, that that's something that KCKPS is making sure that we do that. So, I appreciate you continuing to elevate that for us as a district, as a board, as staff, so thank you for that. Just a great, great opportunity, great conversation, but I just wanted to share those pieces out with you all. So, again, thank you, welcome. So excited to start another great academic year with you all. I'm very excited for the opportunities to come. This year brings a lot of joy, hope, excitement, and focus. Focus for us to be better, to do better, because our kids are depending on all of us to make sure that we're providing what we can and the support so that they can continue to grow and reach that potential that they have. So, with that, I will open the floor for any board members that would like to share anything. Thank you. Ms. Drew.
I'd just like to say that in looking at everything that we approved, I was looking through and saw that our maintenance and transportation department is fully engaged, and we only had one shortage in one of those positions. And so, therefore, they are moving in the right direction to help our students, and this morning I have the privilege of going to Gloria Willis as the transportation people were there, and they were enlightening them about what's going to happen this upcoming school year. But I'm old-school, and so I'd like to say to these two departments, I'm an Andy Griffin fan, Gomer Powell, thank you, thank you, thank you. Because you have done everything to the best of your ability. Overall, when I looked at everything, I see that our numbers are beginning to diminish. We may not be where we want to be at the top, but we're gradually moving forward in the right direction, and so we're moving on up. And so, I would like to say thank you to the HR department for all the work that you're doing. I know a lot of times we never really mention anything, but I just noticed this today, and I wanted to say thank you, and I hope that we can continue to move forward with your support and your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Ms. Page?
Yeah, on July 27th, I attended the makeup graduation. I want to thank those parents and family members who came out and the young people who felt they needed something else, and it was good that we were able to give them that. And hopefully, our goal is to do better, and when you know better, you do better. And we're still growing, so just hopefully next year we won't have those problems. The new teacher orientation, that was exciting, and hopefully we can get more people to think about education as a career. I know it's not something people are tearing down the door to get to, but we do need you. If you thought about it, it's a good career. No, you're not going to make millions of dollars, but you can support yourself. So, we need to really start talking that up. So we need to really start talking that up and try to get more of our young people to think about it, and even older people who care, to think about it as a career. So it was just good to see the new faces, and they were excited, and that's a good feeling if you've ever been through that, to go through and know you're about to make a difference in a lot of people's lives. We had our back-to-school, that was awesome, to see all those people. They were there at 7:30 on the dot in line, just waiting on us, so that's a good thing. And then we had our special board meeting, and we look forward to having teacher negotiation next week, and hopefully we can have all that resolved.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Page, for sharing. Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I just, real quickly, wanted to share an invitation for the board, but also the community, to attend the 2023 Suburban Balance Equity and Education Summit. The theme this year is creating an equitable learning environment in schools, how far have we come, and how we can all contribute as a community on behalf of children. It will feature a superintendent's panel, including not only our own, Ms. Dr. Stubblefield, a teacher's symposium, and a community conversation with Kansas and Missouri District leaders. This happens not only on the best born day, August 26th, which is also my birthday, shameless plug, but I would love to start the morning with all of you to celebrate, as I'll be attending this free event, and so if you're free, come celebrate my birthday, but more importantly, and celebrate the work that's being done in education to make it more equitable and accessible to all of our students. So, thank you.
Great.
Can you send us an email?
I sure can.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll send it.
Well, I want to say that right now, keep your fingers crossed, that all of our school buses are undergoing highway patrol inspection. Usually I get to go celebrate with them, but I'm at a board meeting tonight, that the Transportation Department every year has that lined up, and the officers get there, it's one, two, three. Our staff does a wonderful job of getting ready to transport our children. Ms. Drew and I were at the Transportation meeting this morning and this afternoon. I got to welcome back our Nutritional Service people, and last week I got to be at a counselor's meeting. Our counselors are so excited. It's an exciting time of the year because we know our kids are coming back. Our staff are re-energized after their short break, and it's just great to feel the energy when you walk into these meetings. So keep it up, people, this exciting time of the year, and the sports haven't even started yet.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Humphries. Always lots going on, such an engaged board, I love it. Thank you. All right, we'll continue with our agenda. Next up is our Community Comment section. We do not have anyone signed up for Community Comment tonight, but an invitation, an open, always an open and standing invitation for anyone who would like to speak, please sign up with our Board Clerk, Ms. Leslie Smith. Next agenda item, item number six on the agenda board, these are up for potential action if it is the will of the board. These items have come before us at least once before, and so they are up for questions, but again, potential action if we so choose to. The first item on the agenda, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the MOU between KCK Public Schools and Associated General Contractor of Kansas, AGC, as submitted by Dr. Danita Fernandez Flores, Executive Director of Diploma Plus College and Career Instructional Programs, Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Are there questions or discussion on this item?
Just, I have a question, and I didn't send it earlier. Apologize. Is it possible that these young people could later on become apprentice? I know what it says they're doing, but is that a possibility for them? Is she here?
Yes, somebody is coming forward to respond to that.
At this time, I am not certain the qualifications that are necessary to be part of an apprenticeship, but our CT Coordinator is here who may add to that.
Good evening. Kelly James, CT Coordinator for the district. Ma'am, regarding your question, I know that our Work-Based Learning Coordinator is working on bringing in apprenticeship opportunities. The NCCER certification is industry-recognized and is pushed by the Associate of General Contractors as an industry-recognized credential to make sure that our students are highly qualified when those opportunities become available.
So as a follow-up to that question, because I think what continues, we continue to be brought things, so is there like a sense of urgency? Is there a timeline? I feel like even getting to the part where we see the partnerships and we see the material, sometimes feel like there's a huge delay, and I'm not really sure like how we see this, like this is a program we've had for 14 years. How do we not know what the process to be apprentice is?
I'm sorry, I can't speak historically to the past 14 years, but I do know that we are putting that in place, and we do have quite a few work-based learning items and opportunities coming online, especially in this pathway. There is a huge deficit of construction employees right now, and we are getting support through industry, hopefully, to hurry that along.
But I guess like internally, what is our process to make sure that we have both internships, externships, and understanding of the needs of our students and how we get them not only from just having the skills, but to actually having a job that gets them to the next step?
Very good. I understand your question. I think that's a little larger than what I could speak to right now, but I'd be happy to submit something to the board if that's acceptable.
We'll look into the qualifications for apprenticeships and bring that information forward.
Okay.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, so there's a motion, second on the floor. If no additional questions, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
I'm voting yes, but like Ms. Russell, I would like to see us work toward that, that they have some sort of apprenticeship, they have some kind of job, instead of just, they're getting the skills, but there should be a job connection with it.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Ms. Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Yeah, we'll make sure that any additional follow-up items or information is shared with the entire board and/or brought back before the board for future, for more information. Thank you for the questions. Our next item, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the MOU between Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools and the Learning Club.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions on this item? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next agenda item, 6C, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the MOU between Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools and Mercy and Truth Medical Missions for the 2023-2024 school year.
So moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Are there questions or further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item, 6D, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the request for purchase of a secondary curriculum for reading intervention, submitted by Dr. Fernandez Flores, through Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Are there questions and/or discussions on this item? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Page, please.
I apologize.
You're fine.
Now, well, I saw that it's high school and it's middle school, and then what about elementary? Are this just geared toward the secondary level?
This is just geared to a secondary. In the previous board meetings, I think we brought the, we've brought forth the reading resource for elementary. You've already approved that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is 6E, it is recommended that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approve the MOU for a Call to Men Healthy Initiative and USD 500 Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools for the 2023-2024 school year, as submitted by Dr. Jermaine Wilson, Executive Director of Student Services and Family Support, and Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Are there questions and/or discussion on this item? Yes, Ms. Russell?
I don't have a question or discussion, I just have a comment and just want to, he just walked in, real sly. At the Resource Fair, this was one of the popular tables. I think it piqued a lot of people's interest, and a lot of folks have questions around getting involved and engaged, and so I just want to say kudos for showing up, showing out, and I look forward to what this program will do and how it will challenge, but also change the lives of the students in our district. So kudos to you and your team, Mr. Sly Guy. So yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is an executive session would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of safety and security, going in at 5:45 for 15 minutes to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, Chief Nicholson, and Ms. Samree Devon. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1383.96]
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is an executive session would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of safety and security going in at 5:45 for 15 minutes to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, Chief Nicholson, and Ms. Samree Devon. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Our next agenda item is an executive session would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of safety and security going in at 5:45 for 15 minutes to include Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Goheen, Mr. Lilly, Dr. Campbell, Chief Nicholson, and Ms. Samree Devon. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. We will continue with our agenda, next agenda item, item number eight. Board, this is for informational purposes tonight. If you have any questions, this is regarding part of the strategy and an update around strategies and items that the district and the district teams will be working on regarding substance abuse prevention, education, and awareness throughout the academic year. So you'll find there's information there for you to review and look at. If there are questions tonight, absolutely, we're happy to pose any of those questions. But as always, you're welcome to ask questions as they come up throughout the years. But we just wanted to make sure before we start the year that you had some of this in front of you. So any questions on this item?
Yeah, I have a question. The new Kansas City, Kansas Police Chief made a statement that I thought was pretty powerful, and I want us to be careful about not just having a lot of meetings where we talk. We need to put some meat behind what we say. And I was just wondering, what does the fentanyl awareness campaign launch? What does that entail? What's going to happen?
So Ms. Chauvin is coming to the microphone, but I will share as she's approaching. Myself and Chief Nicholson both were at a fentanyl roundtable with Sharice Davis last week. And this is more of a collaborative community effort. And one of the key components that we talked about, and I'm sure that's a part of what they're sharing, is really making parents aware of what students have access to, what are the signs around it so that they are not completely oblivious? And also making sure that our students are aware of the dangers and the importance of knowing what to do if you are with friends who may intentionally or unintentionally take fentanyl, making Narcan more readily available. But it's really about the education and the prevention because the earlier they know, the better choices that they'll make. But I just wanted to add that we participated in that roundtable, and that's really the focus and first call. And several other community organizations are partnering with school districts and the communities to educate parents and students about it to help prevent deaths around fentanyl.
So if you're, what I heard your question was asking is what is the fentanyl sort of, what is that kickoff? That actually started at the Back to School Fair with our Enough is Enough table. So we've got a group specifically focused, a subcommittee of Enough is Enough, focused on that fentanyl awareness. And we're doing that multi-pronged approach that Dr. Stubblefield spoke about, where we're not just educating our students, but we're also educating our staff, and we're educating and raising awareness within our community and caregivers. And so that multi-pronged approach looks like having those awareness events and using a one pill can, one pill can kill theme. And so it's everything from having handouts in our community, in our businesses, having awareness events similar to the ones that we had last year at Gloria Willis. And so we have a couple already tentatively scheduled, the fentanyl awareness events, one in November. And so the thought is we just continue to raise awareness, like Dr. Stubblefield spoke about, while continuing to activate the community on not only what we can do if we know it's out there, but what we can do to prevent it from being out there.
Okay, well, the reason I made that statement, we did that. And we, more people should have heard what was presented. So are we trying to do something different? It take the message to the people? Do you go in the housing complex? We can't do the traditional thing. It's not working. So I'm asking, can we think out of the box? Go to churches, go to community centers, go to have something in the apartment complex? We can't make it just for us if we really want to get the word out. So I'm just asking that, oh, that sounds good. But are you really trying to get it to the people? Go where the people are, because they're not coming to the traditional setting to us. So are we going to go outside the box and do more? And really go where the people are? Because that's what we're going to have to do. Maybe they work, they can't get off. We got to figure out what, how do we get them there? And go outside of the traditional way to do it? Because it's not working. They're not coming.
Yeah, heard. And I completely agree with you. That's conversations we have had as a larger overall Enough is Enough Advisory Board, as well as the subcommittee is, we're doing it about them, without them. We haven't included the voice of the people we're trying to serve and support in such a really rich way. And so how do we have that conversation with them, not around them? And so heard, received, and that's something that we are problem solving around, is how do we have a continual voice from people affected by it? Not just one think tank, but rather a continual informed approach. Heard, where, and the ideas you heard, I hope somebody caught those in a note somewhere.
Yeah. So Ms. Page, I'll say with the roundtable, Chief Nicholson and I were a part of, we specifically talked about leveraging churches and community centers and going to events that people are already at. So similar to this past weekend when we had the Back to School Drive, those events that we know people are coming, making sure that we have that education and those opportunities there. And specifically, we talked about leveraging the events that parents come to to support their kids, sports, theaters, arts, what are those kind of informational tables, advertisements, banners that we can put up so, or when you can run a commercial, a quick commercial.
Motion to return to open session, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. We will continue with our agenda, next agenda item, item number eight. Board, this is for informational purposes tonight. If you have any questions, this is regarding part of the strategy and an update around strategies and items that the district and the district teams will be working on regarding substance abuse prevention, education, and awareness throughout the academic year. So you'll find there's information there for you to review and look at. If there are questions tonight, absolutely, we're happy to pose any of those questions. But as always, you're welcome to ask questions as they come up throughout the years. But we just wanted to make sure before we start the year that you had some of this in front of you. So any questions on this item?
Yeah, I have a question. The new Kansas City, Kansas police chief made a statement that I thought was pretty powerful, and I want us to be careful about not just having a lot of meetings where we talk. We need to put some meat behind what we say. And I was just wondering, what does the fentanyl awareness campaign launch, what does that entail? What's going to happen?
So Ms. Chauvin is coming to the microphone, but I will share as she's approaching. Myself and Chief Nicholson both were at a fentanyl roundtable with Sharice Davis last week, and this is more of a collaborative community effort. And one of the key components that we talked about, and I'm sure that's a part of what they're sharing, is really making parents aware of what students have access to, what are the signs around it so that they are not completely oblivious, and also making sure that our students are aware of the dangers and the importance of knowing what to do if you are with friends who may intentionally or unintentionally take fentanyl, making Narcan more readily available. But it's really about the education and the prevention because the earlier they know, the better choices that they'll make. But I just wanted to add that we participated in that roundtable, and that's really the focus. And First Call and several other community organizations are partnering with school districts and communities to educate parents and students about it to help prevent deaths around fentanyl.
So if you're, what I heard your question was asking is what is the fentanyl sort of, what is that kickoff? That actually started at the back-to-school fair with our Enough is Enough table. So we've got a group specifically focused, a subcommittee of Enough is Enough, focused on that fentanyl awareness. And we're doing that multi-pronged approach that Dr. Stubblefield spoke about, where we're not just educating our students, but we're also educating our staff, and we're educating and raising awareness within our community and caregivers. And so that multi-pronged approach looks like having those awareness events and using a one pill can, one pill can kill theme. And so it's everything from having handouts in our community, in our businesses, having awareness events similar to the ones that we had last year at Gloria Willis. And so we have a couple already tentatively scheduled, the fentanyl awareness events, one in November. And so the thought is, we just continue to raise awareness, like Dr. Stubblefield spoke about, while continuing to activate the community on not only what we can do if we know it's out there, but what we can do to prevent it from being out there.
Okay, well, the reason I made that statement, we did that, and we, more people should have heard what was presented. So are we trying to do something different? Take the message to the people? Do you go in the housing complex? We can't do the traditional thing. It's not working. So I'm asking, can we think out of the box, go to churches, go to community centers, go to, have something in the apartment complex? We can't make it just for us if we really want to get the word out. So I'm just asking that, all that sounds good, but are you really trying to get it to the people? Go where the people are, because they're not coming to the traditional setting to us. So are we going to go outside the box and do more, and really go where the people are? Because that's what we're going to have to do. Maybe they work, they can't get off. We got to figure out what, how do we get them there and go outside of the traditional way to do it? Because it's not working. They're not coming.
Heard. And I completely agree with you. That's conversations we have had as a larger overall Enough is Enough advisory board, as well as the subcommittee is, we're doing it about them, without them. We haven't included the voice of the people we're trying to serve and support in such a really rich way. And so how do we have that conversation with them, not around them? And so heard, received, and that's something that we are problem-solving around, is how do we have a continual voice from people affected by it, not just one think tank, but rather a continual informed approach, heard. Where, and the ideas you heard, I hope somebody caught those in a note somewhere.
Yeah. So Ms. Page, I'll say with the roundtable, Chief Nicholson and I were a part of, we specifically talked about leveraging churches and community centers and going to events that people are already at. So similar to this past weekend when we had the back-to-school drive, those events that we know people are coming, making sure that we have that education and those opportunities there. And specifically, we talked about leveraging the events that parents come to, to support their kids, sports, theaters, arts, what are those kind of informational tables, advertisements, banners that we can put up? So when you can run a commercial, a quick commercial, run a quick commercial on like our channel, put it on our social media. So those were all things that we discussed collectively at that roundtable. And I know Chief Nicholson took all that information down and said he was going to bring it back to the team here so that we can implement it here, and then also support the events that other organizations are having to make sure that our families know that they're there. And in the cases where we may need to provide transportation, explore those kind of options as well.
Yeah, I would just echo your remarks around, I guess, all of the remarks and really the event we went to at the end of the year with all of the young people. I think it's great when you have those opportunities, but leveraging the relationships and the knowledge of young people to also be those ambassadors. So it's different when I see you, Tracy, at the Enough is Enough table versus seeing a young person, because I'm intrigued. I want to hear in, in the most positive way is what I meant. Don't make those faces at me. But, but you know what I'm saying. And so I think, but also they can be, that peer-to-peer relationship is really what I'm getting at, is someone I know and someone who knows what I, what information I can share, especially when we're talking about Skittles or we're talking about the chocolate bar. I think that was one of the most informational pieces that I took away from the event that was held, was just what it looks like now and what emojis in the phone. And like, kids know that information. And so how can they share it with each other in a way that changes minds about even trying things? And so I appreciate your approach and even your response here today about, we've got to do a better job of being intentional about being in the communities that we serve and taking advantage of those opportunities versus expecting them to come to us. So I look forward to the work that you all will do alongside Health Services to continually fight this pandemic that we're going through. So, thank you.
And we have a communications department. We show a lot of reruns. We got kids, they're creative. We can't use them and put them on the station? And they're going to go, they're going to tell their friends, their parents, my baby's on TV. Let's utilize these kids. We have a medium, to me, that I don't think we fully take advantage of. And it's there, people do watch it. Let's make it work for these kids and help them help us get the word out.
And for the record, I do like to see Tracy out of it, okay?
Thank you guys for that feedback. Yes, thank you guys for that feedback. It's noted by all of us on the advisory committee and on the planning committee for all of this. So any other feedback, feel free to email it to Chief and Tiffany Lewis and I so that we can triage it and figure out how to best really synthesize that feedback into the work that's currently being done. But we appreciate all the feedback. What other questions do you have? Seeing none, can we dismiss ourselves?
Thank you. Thank you both. Great conversation. And this is an ongoing conversation, and it's going to take all of us to be a part of this, to make sure that we curb this, this issue that we have around substance abuse. So thank you, team. Thank you, board, for your engagement, for your feedback. Our next agenda item, board, we're going to flip items nine and 10. So we will hear from our Avid team. Dr. Bilbo Irvin and Dr. Scott will come and present, and I apologize and tell you ahead of time that we were going to do that, but we're going to go ahead and hear our board report regarding Avid before we do our budget discussion.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. LaShonda Bilbo Irvin, the Executive Director of High Schools and also one of the district directors for Avid.
And good evening, Dr. Kristin Scott, Executive Director of Middle Schools, co-district director for Avid. Good evening, Board President Lopez, board members, Dr. Stubblefield and staff. We are here this evening to provide a high-level update on the Avid program. Avid stands for Advancement via Individual Determination, and its mission is to close the opportunity gap by preparing all students for college and career readiness and success in a global society. Avid is in its second year of implementation at our four comprehensive high schools and two middle schools. This year, we are adding the remaining five middle schools, as well as two elementary schools for their first year of implementation. At this end, at the end of this presentation, we will present the five-year implementation plan to you. Avid has a college and career framework. It is built on the four school-wide domains of instruction, systems, leadership, and culture. We will highlight those four domains when we talk about the CCI template. The College and Career Readiness Framework articulates what students need and what educators do to support college and career readiness and success for all students. There are two components that I would like to highlight. First is relational capacity. You see that around the triangle in the yellow. Avid defines relational capacity as the connection among individuals that develops over time when interactions are built on respect, trust, and authenticity. When educators connect with students and colleagues and students connect with peers, learning and confidence are activated on all campuses. All three connections are instrumental in helping students grow to see their capabilities and find their own way. The second item is collective educator agency, which is defined as educators taking intentional actions based on shared beliefs and trust that together they can increase opportunity and measurable success, excuse me, for all students and each other. When collective educator agency develops on a campus, the learning environment transforms into one where students are challenged, supported, and provided the tools needed to succeed.
So how is Avid measured? We use the Coaching and Certification Instrument to guide educators through the process of implementation. The four domains in the Avid framework, leadership, instruction, culture, and systems, is how Avid is measured school-wide. In the instruction domain, it focuses entirely on teaching, the staff, and how to utilize the Avid strategies to improve academic performance for our students. In classrooms, you will see students using focus notes, e-binders, and portfolios. Also, students are focusing on time management skills using agendas and calendars. Professional learning for all staff as related to the WICR strategies are used in all classrooms. When you look at the culture domain, that focuses on rigor, the collaboration in our schools' POCs, and the design of rigorous assessments in all courses to ensure students participate in enrichment activities, college and career fairs, and the school climate promotes post-secondary success. Avid's school-wide focuses on these domains being exhibited in all classes and professional learning to ensure that leadership sets the vision and tone that promote college and career readiness and high expectations for all students in the school. Also focuses a common belief in student success and family and community involvement. Our Diploma Plus College and Career Instructional Programs team will be providing professional development encompassing WICR strategies by utilizing the Avid professional learning modules for all secondary instructional staff this year. Teachers, the goal is for our teachers to take their professional development and utilize what they've earned in the classroom and incorporate those high instructional strategies in their classroom delivery. The Avid elective is one period a day where students learn organizational and study skills. They work on critical thinking and asking probing questions. They get academic help from peers and tutors and participate in enrichment and motivational activities that make college and career seem attainable. This last slide shows our implementation plan. We are heading into year two. Please note that Sumner High School will be added to the 24-25 school year. And as Dr. Scott mentioned, the first year of implementation included all four of our comprehensive high schools, along with Argentine and Arrowhead. Going into this school year, you see the schools listed and the trajectory of our five-year plan. I don't mean to harm, but can we get a copy of that? It wasn't in the slide. No, that's okay. And the first time that Avid was introduced, the implementation plan was alongside the contract, but I can send it again.
And we can update and get to you this updated slide deck and also replace it in board docs. We can do that for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And note that all of the pictures were pictures of our staff participating in Avid professional development since the start of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for regarding the Avid presentation?
So what data do we have to show that it's working?
So in our first year of implementation last year, all schools participating submitted the Coaching and Certification Instrument that I mentioned. And so it's either meets or not meets in terms of implementation. So our first year, Avid did not score us because you weigh the first year so you get to know the instrument. And so this year, we will get a rating per se for our schools and our implementation.
Also add in that at each school, there is an Avid site coordinator that we work directly with. They also are responsible for gathering data, and it's called the Secondary Site Data Collection Form. So that is data on students who participate in the Avid elective as compared to students who don't participate in the Avid elective, numbers enrolled, and algebra. So there's a, it's a 14-page document that we also submit, that we collect data on to see the effectiveness of the program.
Okay. Thank you.
And some of that data, we also can include when we do the quarterly academic report, just to show students enrolled in Avid versus students not. And as the cohorts progress through, we also have graduation rate for Avid students. Like, if we, I don't know if we had any seniors last year, but if we had 10 seniors and they all graduated, it would have been 100%. So those are data points that we can start adding in addition to our other academic reports.
When you say that, it makes my mind. So when you say middle school implementation, so does that mean there's a sixth grade Avid, a seventh grade Avid, and an eighth grade Avid? So it's a cohort graduation, similar to how like 2031 goal is the current fifth graders? Is that how that works, or is it a specific grade?
In a perfect world, that, that would be the trajectory. When we have visited other districts and other campuses, there are students who say, I have been in Avid for six years at a high school. I can say our middle schools are starting small. Last year, Argentine Middle School, for example, offered it to eighth grade. This year, they're offering it to seventh and eighth grade students for the elective. Their goal then is to then offer it to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The transition from Argentine to Harmon, the eighth graders last year at Argentine were selected and encouraged to enroll in the Avid elective at Harmon High School so we can continue that cohort and collect further data on students who are in the Avid elective their entire career, middle and high, because it's only offered at middle and high school, the elective piece.
But we can track students, if you were ever in Avid, we can track them through and pull that data. We just, in our data systems, need to tag them to see. Because I know students personally who did it two years in high school, got all they needed and used those skills and transferred those skills. And so they were still counted in the outcome data for Avid when they graduated because they did have the Avid elected at some point, yeah.
As long as Mr. Conrad knows how hard y'all are making his job back there, I'm just making sure. Okay, all right. I can't see his face, so I'm just committing him to every...
He just smiled.
Ms. Scott, did I understand correctly? The Avid is an elective in middle school?
And it is being offered during family advocacy. It is the elective, because that's the term we use. But if six students were enrolled in the Avid elective and you were their Avid elective teacher, you are also their family advocate. So that's where they will get the coursework.
Okay. But in high school, it's an elective, or it's offered during?
It's an actual elective.
It's an actual elective class in high school.
The high school schedule has a lot more flexibility so that kids can balance it out. And the elective, the middle school is a little more prescribed, so. And as it is implemented and we grow and learn, we'll be able to do things better and, you know, make the adjustments that are necessary. I will just add, at the elementary level, depending on what grade level or grade levels they're implementing it, it's really more school-wide around just implementing the WICR strategy so kids have those foundational skills. So by the, you get, time you get to the middle school, you really can focus on the kids who actually need that extra because foundationally, all of them will know like focus note-taking and how to write and the inquiry. It just becomes a part of, you know, what they do. And right now, as we're implementing it, we won't see those results until the first group of elementary kids get through.
Every time you talk, it makes me think.
Okay, I'm not going to talk anymore.
So blame it on her. So in elementary, is it a specific teacher, or it's, or it's like instructional coaching through the utilization of strategies that then trinkles down? But there's no like designated person who actually knows the methodology?
So at the elementary level, for the schools who, either they pick grade levels depending on the size, so they may say, we're going to start with fifth grade and kinder so that we can, you know, send those kids to middle school. It's strategies, it's the WICR strategies is focused on that. So they just naturally use it as an instructional, as a part of their instruction around, here's how you take notes. This is what inquiry looks like. This is, and so they just build it into, so all kids in that particular grade, that class or a grade level receives the instruction around that, yeah.
Is there a family component? How do you get the parents involved in what they're doing?
There is a family component. At the middle school and the high school, they advertise for students to become a part of Avid, and they will, at Family Advocacy and at Open House, have a table sharing information, encouraging families to sign up.
There's also, for those families that do sign up, each school, I was able to attend both Argentine and Arrowhead's parent night, where they actually signed the contract, presented additional information about Avid, what it can do for your, your child. So it's a lot of involvement with the parents.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Additional thoughts or questions? Well, we are excited to continue to learn more. Board, as questions come up, please make sure you share those or any feedback or thoughts, share those with Dr. Stubblefield. We will continue, and thank you, Dr. Bilbo Irvin and Dr. Scott. We'll continue with our agenda. We'll go back to item number nine. Board, this is for information and discussion purposes. No action is being asked of the board. This is just some additional information that was requested by the board previously regarding the overall budget. And you'll see a few slides here regarding the timeline for our budget process, and then also our draft of the board budget. So...
There's no one presenting the information. Ms. Kaiser is actually not here tonight, but Mr. Lilly and I are prepped to answer any questions that may come up or to write them down and get the answers to you. But the two documents, if you want to start with your board budget, the things that you discussed were updated and adjusted. If you look on the other document where it has all of the different departments, including the board's budget, those numbers have been updated to include the salary increases that have been implemented. Because we're still under negotiations, that's where the asterisks are. But there's no like designated person who actually knows the methodology?
So at the elementary level, for the schools who, either they pick grade levels depending on the size. So they may say, we're going to start with fifth grade and kinder so that we can, you know, send those kids to middle school. It's strategies. It's the WICRA strategies is focused on that. So they just naturally use it as an instructional, as a part of their instruction around, here's how you take notes. This is what inquiry looks like. This is, and so they just build it into, so all kids in that particular grade, that class or a grade level receives the instruction around that. Yeah.
Is there a family component? How do you get the parents involved in what they're doing?
There is a family component. At the middle school and the high school, they advertise for students to become a part of Avid. And they will, at Family Advocacy and at Open House, have a table sharing information, encouraging families to sign up.
Okay.
There's also, for those families that do sign up, each school, I, I was able to attend both Argentine and Arrowhead's parent night, where they actually signed the contract, presented additional information about Avid, what it can do for your, your child. So it's a lot of involvement with the parents.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Additional thoughts or questions? Okay. Well, we are excited to continue to learn more. Board, as questions come up, please make sure you share those or any feedback or thoughts, share those with Dr. Stubblefield. We will continue, and thank you, Dr. Bilbo Irvin and Dr. Scott. We'll continue with our agenda. We'll go back to item number nine. Board, this is for information and discussion purposes. No action is being asked of the board. This is just some additional information that was requested by the board previously regarding the overall budget. And you'll see a few slides here regarding the timeline for our budget process and then also our draft of the board budget. So.
There's no one presenting the information. Ms. Kaiser is actually not here tonight, but Mr. Lilly and I are prepped to answer any questions that may come up or to write them down and get the answers to you. But the two documents, if you want to start with your board budget, the things that you discussed were updated and adjusted. If you look on the other document where it has all of the different departments, including the board's budget, those numbers have been updated to include the salary increases that have been implemented. Because we're still under negotiations, that's where the asterisks are that impact staff that are covered under the master agreement. And the board's final budget is just waiting to be added to that. At the August twenty-second meeting is when we would have the budget hearing. We'll have the language around, that's required by the legislator around saying that the board reviewed and considered the building needs assessments and addressed those three questions. So at the next meeting is when we will be asking you to approve the budget at that point in order to meet the deadlines for the state statute.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. So if there are any questions regarding what was just shared, our timeline, or any of the additional documents regarding the budget information, we have Mr. Lilly and Dr. Stubble, Dr. Stubblefield here to answer any of those questions. So I'll pause in case there are any questions on either of those two items.
I previously sent a question regarding what is the action the board will need to take regarding the thirty-nine thousand dollar difference in the, in the budget.
Yeah, we were going to get to the board budget here next. This was just the timeline for the overall budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I must have heard that wrong. I thought she said start there. Okay, sorry.
So we'll go to our board budget. Board, you have a draft, a PDF of the board budget based on the feedback that we discussed previously. And Ms. Russell, I apologize, I didn't answer you earlier. The green column, or the green and yellow column, is the draft budget that we are looking at, not the one that says proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. The green column, green-yellow column, is the one with the proposed changes. After board discussion, you'll see the change in legal services and then so on. So we'll open the floor for any questions. I'll just highlight a couple of areas that I, where I did make some adjustments based on feedback from the previous meeting. There were, if you scroll down under other expenses, we were charging board docs, the board docs fee, the, and some consultant fees out of other expenses. So I took that out of that line item and moved them appropriately under dues and fees and/or consultant line items. So you'll see a little bit of a bump there in the dues and fees row, budget row. And additionally, under the consultant, that's where I just, I added, or we will pay those consultant fees out of that line item. And then the KASB legal assistance, which was being paid out of other expenses, was also moved to dues and fees line items. So those were the changes that were made. So open for any thoughts, questions? Again, we're not voting on this tonight. Just if there's any feedback. If not, if we're okay with continuing to move forward, then the team will take this and put it together with the overall budget. Now, there was a question, Ms. Russell, to your question. So if you notice, the board, proposed board budget is less than it had been previously by thirty-nine thousand plus dollars. So to Ms. Russell's question, if there is direction from the board of where we would like to direct those funds or how, what we need to do with those funds to give direction to administration, now would be an appropriate time to have that conversation or to give guidance?
There are two things that I would advocate for, one being graduation, but we don't know what that is yet. And the other one is parent engagement strategies. I think those are two areas in which our district, both us as a board have said we are committed to and what that looks like. I know the Octavio and his team presented on some workshops and things that they wanted to do. I know I've discussed like the truancy and like food and the thing, like people are in a three, four-hour workshop training with their children. They should be having food at those events. And so that would be the two areas that I would consider, depending on the direction that the board goes. A, with graduation, but B, increasing family engagement opportunities as well. So that would just be my feedback.
And just so if the board just want, the, both of those are covered under the student support and Dr. Wilson's department. So we will bring forth at the next board meeting a proposal for graduations. And there, there is an increase in cost. But between the two of those, if you didn't want to be prescriptive, we could give Dr. Wilson's department the, the leeway to make sure that those, both of those things are covered. Because both of them, as you mentioned, fall under with his staff.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Other thoughts?
No, I'm not descriptive or prescriptive, whatever. Yeah. I don't, that's not.
I think those are two great areas, and I would have no, no issue with that. I would be in favor of seeing, seeing those dollars used in those ways, but open to other conversation, other ideas.
I feel like it's a good thing to do, but I would, I, I just want a little bit more clarity in where it's going, how it's going to be spent. That's a lot of money that we have, and I think we, as a board, we can use it to support within the schools. But I, I think more work and time and effort and planning would need to be done in order for us to be able to make sure that we utilize that money as to where it's going to go.
So, Mr., I can offer this. We'll know the cost of graduation when we bring it to you next week. And I could work with, and Dr. Campbell can work with Dr. Wilson and his, and his team to say, we have this many, is it packed where the families come? We can allocate, you know, ten thousand dollars to that to make sure that we have, I'm just.
The amount of money, yes.
Towards the food and the rest will go towards, to ensure that we have a venue at graduation so that students and families can come without.
Okay.
Being concerned about tickets.
Thank you.
So we could, we can give you that information prior to the next board meeting, and then it would be reflected in their final budget line on there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I would agree with Ms. Russell that we do something to try to engage our community, let that money go toward Mr. Wilson's department so that we can help engage families and get them involved. We may not know how, but I'm quite sure they would love more money if they can use it to help and get our families more involved. Because we got to be more creative. And like you said, if food gets them there, you, you got to, Jesus fed them, and they came. So we may have to do the same.
I love it. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Drew and Ms. Page. Additional thoughts or ideas? If not, then I think we can hand that off to Dr. Stubblefield and the team to, to work through. Thank you. Any other thoughts on the board budget, the proposed board budget, those line items before we move forward? Again, we're not voting on anything tonight. It's just if there's any feedback or additional thoughts.
Can you just one more time go through? So now we've worked through that part. So August twenty-second, it'll come back to us for a public hearing as well as all of the pieces without the negotiations. And we'll vote on it at the next board meeting?
Yeah. So the next meeting will, Mr. Lilly, I'm right. The next meeting will be the hearing, and then the board will vote on what is presented. And then the district, we will publish on August twenty-ninth, whatever the direction the board goes. And then the district will hold the public hearing to exceeded on September. And then September twentieth is district submits budget to KSDE. So you will actually be taking action at the next board meeting, then it'll come back on the, in the timeline.
Next meeting, we're voting on both the budget and the mill levy amount?
That's correct.
We're doing both of those together? And the public hearing is then later after? Because it says the public hearing is September.
The public hearing will be after that. That'll be in September.
After you publish.
Correct.
Thank you. Additional questions? Thank you. Thank you, board, for the feedback and working through all of those items. Okay, we will continue with our agenda. Next agenda item, item eleven. This is the fun part. We will review some policies. So first item on, under item eleven is to accept, it's recommended to accept for the third read, the USD five hundred Student Code of Conduct for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year submitted by Dr. Jermaine Wilson, Executive Director of Student Services and Family Support, Dr. Judith Campbell, Deputy Superintendent, and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or feedback? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
I just want to make one comment. And I, so is it coming back to, I guess it's a question. Is it coming back to us again? Because there are things in here that are still missing.
So right now, you're adopting as a third read, which would mean you're adopting it. If you got changes to it, then you're essentially would want to make those changes. You could, you could ask it to be brought or moved to be brought back for a fourth read. If they're minor changes, you could adopt it subject, for, for third read, subject to those changes being made. I don't know what specific changes you have to it.
I don't have any changes. It says, I, I do, it does bring me concern about the dress code. And I've brought this up to Dr. Campbell and Dr. Stubblefield, is that I continue, the board worked really hard on the dress code policy. It's not listed in here yet, but it says that it'll be on a certain page. I also want to reiterate that it's important that our administration also abide by the policy that the board has set. So there shouldn't be sub-list or sub-idiations of what we are saying we are, we are following. But that dress code policy actually be followed in its continuity.
So are you asking for a reference to the dress code to be included or an actual?
So it says it is, but it's still highlighted as yellow and not included in the policy. So on page.
So what you could do is you could accept it for third read with the inclusion of the dress code at the highlighted spot. And that would effectuate the third read, and then that would be included in the publication. If that's what you want.
I know, but I apologize. I waited until the vote to actually have my stuff together, so.
You're all right.
So that would be my, that would be where my direction would be. But we're already in the middle of a vote, so I'm not really sure. Do I vote yes or do I?
Well, you could see if there could be an amendment to the vote to that effect. If there's a blank spot in the, in the document, if that's what you're saying, and you want to make sure that when you're approving it, that includes the dress code in that blank spot, then whoever made the motion could amend the motion to that effect if that's what's missing. And then it would be adopted, but it would be adopted to include that, and then they'd make the, the correction before it's published.
Well, it says on page forty-four, and it's now here, so yes.
Okay. Was, yes. Okay. Thank you.
I guess it's been updated since I looked at it last.
Thank you. All right. So next agenda item, item B, we have before us second read, KASB recommended policy updates.
Did we vote?
We did.
I'm sorry.
I didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we had.
No, I, I was wondering. She said yes.
You were voting.
She said yes. Rachel said yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess, so are they going to bring it back again?
It's actually in there, I think, so there, I don't know.
I didn't see it either, but I.
It's on page forty-five, forty-four and forty-five.
Forty-four, yeah.
Forty, it starts on forty-four.
At some point today, it was updated and it now says ball, policy.
Oh, okay. But I know at the time, it wasn't. So I was lost too, so.
So just so we have a clear record, it is voted and approved for third read, so it's ready to go, right?
There are no more yellow highlights.
No more changes, right? Okay. Just want to make sure it's clear.
Yes, thank you. Okay. So next up, we have for second read, KASB policy updates. So I will hand this off to Mr. Goheen for second read. We did remove a couple of policies that we'll talk about separately that we discussed at the previous board meeting. We'll get to those under item E. So, Mr. Goheen?
So these are the policies that we brought forward last time for a recommended either modification or adoption. A couple of them are new policies. The only comments we had for suggested changes to any of these were policy, I think it's JH. So that has been modified since the first read. So if you're, want to pull that one out separately, that's fine. Otherwise, these are the same that they were as presented at the last meeting, and we would ask for them to be adopted for second read. This is policy AG, policy DEI, which we still need to get a different number for, and we'll do that before the final read. GAFF, GAR, GARID, JBE, JGCC, JDD, JH, which is the one we've made a slight change to, and policy KK. So we would ask for those to be adopted for the second read. And if you have any questions about any of them, let me know. I'll be happy to, to answer those questions. We pulled out the open enrollment policies there later on the agenda to discuss.
I just want to be clear, on JH, which you mentioned, you made additions from the last time?
Correct.
What are those additions?
So it should, it should be, if you look at your, in board docs, I believe it's the, in the, at the bottom of this item, there should be a list of the, sort of like the, you could click on it with the JH. It says, it's one of them says revision. Okay. And so one of it, one of them should show a highlight. I guess yours doesn't, does it? So the highlighted sections in the revised JH were to cover the, what I thought was unclear in KASB's recommended change to make it clear that students who reside in the district can be eligible for participation in high school activity, association activities in our district if they're a resident of the school district or, and that constitutes being enrolled and attending school in the district. I take out the word elementary or secondary because it doesn't matter what type of school they're in. And then there should be one more.
Yours is still different. Because this is the one that says.
Right. There's a, there's a second revision.
That's not what's in here.
It's the, the last attachment down there. It's.
Yeah, you've got it now.
Just need JH three times. Okay, got it.
And, and the distinction there is to make it clear that you can either reside in the district and be eligible for participation in case you activities, or you can be enrolled in the district because a student could be enrolled in the district and not, not be a resident of the district. So that's the distinction.
Keeping us on our toes. Appreciate it.
You're fine.
I wouldn't move to approve the, the policies for second read?
There a second?
Second.
Moved and second to accept for second read, the recommended policy updates. Any further discussion or feedback, comments? Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Carries, thank you. Next agenda item is a first read for policy KDC.
And actually, I think if you want, you could take KDC and GAI together. They're both. They're both designed to address the concern that Ms. Clark had, had raised a while back. This primarily deals with staff members of the school district, employees of the school district, soliciting or seeking to solicit donations or gifts on behalf of the school district, or even personally for use in the classroom, or for students in the school buildings, and to try to not necessarily impose restrictions on that, but to make sure that those are run by school administration, so that they're consistent with what the school district actually needs, and not inconsistent with other items that the district is providing for educational use, and also to make sure that we're not having duplication of provision of goods by the district. So if it's something, for example, that the Board is providing funding for, we don't want requests for donations going out for that same item, or same type of, of equipment or good, and would rather redirect that differently. So this was our attempt to address that concern, and so that's what they're up for. Adoption is revision for first read.
And I'll just add, I did, unfortunately, Ms. Clark can't be with us today, but I did check in with her, knowing she was not going to be here, just to get any feedback that she had on these two potential policy or for first read. And I think Mr. Goheen covered part of her, her question, or just thought process regarding, sometimes we are asking, we educators and teachers, or whoever, whomever are asking for things, when there are things that the school district can and could be providing uniforms, or things that we should be providing, and so just making sure that there's a process that staff can go through, so that if there is something that is being needed by that staff person, athletics, whatever the case may be, and the district is to be providing them, that we do that, or if the Board can make a decision, as Mr. Goheen said, to provide funding for those things. And then the other concern, or just a piece of feedback, was around how, the concern that sometimes it's shown in a negative light, that the district is not providing certain things, or, or is not giving supplies, or whatever the case may be that's being asked for, when in fact, there is an avenue for those things to be provided. So those were, that was where that, the concern or questions were coming from, for Ms. Clark in our conversation.
I make a motion. May we accept the first read for policy KDC and GAI?
Second.
So there's a motion to accept for first read with policies KDC and J, GAI. Ms. Russell?
So I am, I don't think that I am supportive of this, and I will say that, because I don't think a clear process has been established, nor is there an expectation... I don't know. I think, and I, without speaking to like the intent of this, or I understand what Ms. Clark is saying, but I also think there are things that the school district, regardless if I ask for them, potentially will say no. And this is essentially taking that opportunity away from community, to, from the grassroots community opportunities for staff to ask individuals for help, and I think that's where, or ask others for help. And I don't think that I agree with that, because I don't think it's any different than a principal going to a community partner. A couple of months ago in May, when we received the, the grants report from the federal Title IX from that department, I didn't pry too much into it, because I knew this kind of had went away, but like, I didn't see donor choose for classroom list, or for those things. And so that brings the element of concern. While that was brought up as a route that staff could use, it was not implemented, nor was it shared with staff correctly, and so I think that's why we continue to see those. And I don't want our staff to feel like we're just saying no, but we also know that our staff is also told no at the building level a lot as well. And so if that is their avenue to ask for help, without emailing everyone at central office every time they get told no, then I don't really know what the good solution is. And I would hate to create policy that then doesn't directly impact us, but directly impacts the people in the classroom, so.
So, and I'll let Ms. Walker speak. Yeah, no, I'll let Ms. Walker speak. We do have, so because we get federal dollars, we have like, not only policy, but federal regulations, so that we don't lose money around donor's choice. And there is a process, and we do communicate it out. Now, the gap may be the avenues that we are communicating it out, and we also are relying on administrators to share that with staff members. So we can do a better job about saying, here is how, if you're going to have a donor's choice, or these things. Though, that is, it's a clear process, and it's like documented. We actually just went over it a few weeks ago with all of the administrators. The gap may be that all of our teachers don't know that, so we can directly send that information. Because when we do see somebody out with like a Amazon wishlist, or a GoFundMe, we typically will have some, Julie from Lisa's office will contact that individual and the principal and say, you can't do it this way, but here's how you can do it, and then they can replace it. And actually, I was just on an email two weeks ago, where we just say, you can't do this, but here's what you can do, so that we won't be out of compliance for our federal programs. I, and so I'll let Lisa talk about that process. And I don't know how they show up in the grant list that we report, because it's so many small ones that are out there that we keep track of them, but I don't know if they're on that list.
I, I believe on the last board item that we did at the end of the year, that at the very bottom of it, it gave all the donor's choose information. We started with the grants.
Yeah, and if I remember, I thought I saw less than 10.
And then, and so we usually are always going to include that for you. We included the turnaround time. I think our turnaround time for approving a donor's choose, once we get it, is about a day and a half. So Julie, Omelee Simmons, our grant manager, she and I just spent last Friday, we shared a session with our DEI department, and we saw three groups of secondary teachers in the morning, and three groups of elementary teachers in the afternoon. We walked them through the process for applying for a grant or a donor's choose. We did ask that they talk with their principals first, just because of, I think, what the concern is, is that sometimes before we put a request out into the universe for something, we want to make sure that it's not already something that we can manage, or that we could fund, and we want to do that. We also did cover with them that we really want to talk about the strengths of our community and of our students, and use assets-based language when we are making those requests. You know, so that we're really representing our needs in a way that makes all of us proud, and is respectful of the diversity and, and strengths. We also did share them with the teachers, that sometimes there will be items, to your point, Ms. Russell, that even if there were money available, it would not be an allowable expense, because there are some things that a teacher may want for a classroom, that just don't align with how the funding has to be spent, that we receive from the state or from the federal departments. But that's where a donor's choose can come in, so that they're not using their own money. We just say to them, once you know what your need is, the first stop is your principal, to make sure that it's not something that they can help you with. And then your second stop is Julie in the grants office, and we can get you, you know, your program up and running, and go through the appropriate approvals for all that. So our plan is every month to put on the consent agenda, you know, the current grant activity for that month, and that will include donor's choose. And we did share with the new teachers, the donor's choose projects that were funded last year, the amount, what types of projects were funded, some of the language that some of our teachers used that resulted in successful, you know, posting, and then them getting their projects funded. So we can continue to do that. We ask principals to share that in their opening sessions. I do put reminders in the admin desk periodically throughout the year to remind principals to put it in their faculty agendas. We also do have two videos that Julie has made that are in frontline, that get pushed out, so that teachers can watch those videos. Some people prefer to see how to do, you know, the process rather than to read it. And then we have all of the information posted on both the Intranet, as well as the district website, with the process and all the forms that we use. So we're, we're here to help support those needs, and, and to get the message out in whatever way we can, that there are avenues for funding the things that they want to do for our students.
Okay. I guess I would also just potentially suggest, in whatever the upcoming Intranet thing is, when, after this week, that, that information be shared. I hear you. I respect you. I know, I personally just would like to go back to the network and hear from them, that that's what they're seeing, before I can say that I can support policy. That would then completely disable that. That's just my own personal opinion. I support the work you all are doing, and I understand the process. I just want to make sure that that's what other people are understanding, because I think some of the requests that we see are also really specific to how I want to decorate my classroom, or how I want folks to feel, how I want the furniture to look. And I think some of those are more of the harder ones that I see, so.
Yes, and I would agree. We would be open to feedback. We do send it out to the entire staff. Not everybody reads some of the things that are sent out, but we can continue to layer that. And I would say that I would add that I think the policy that might be up for review does just require that there's a supervisor's approval, that there's still an avenue, I believe, for doing it, but just getting, you know, the appropriate approval. And that's just following the grant and donor's choose process.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So question as, as well, and I, and I, I think, I think part of it is, is we don't want to, I think there are community groups and, and folks out in community who want to find ways to partner and engage with, you know, they may have a relationship with someone in a classroom, a teacher, or, or a staff member, and so just making sure that we still have opportunities for that engagement by, by folks. And I think so, as long as, as long as there's, there's an avenue, avenue for that. Mr. Goheen, a question on the policy, maybe just, and, and we've talked about this a couple of occasions. So I know at times, there may be student fundraisers, where they're trying to raise funds for a scholarship for students, or whatever the case may be. Is that also covered under these? And, and I know there's a process, I believe there's a process that students also have to follow, if they're wanting to do a fundraiser to whatever college.
That's a different policy.
Okay.
It's not one of these two. These two policies deal with solicitations from the, from the public by staff primarily, or solicitations by members of the public of staff or students. So the policy you're referring to, I think, is under the J section. I can get you the right one. But it, it deals with fundraisers that relate specifically to student activity-type fundraisers, the band, or, you know, you're going to fundraise for, you know, whatever they might be doing from an activity standpoint. And separate from the policy, if I'm remembering right, there's, there's a process so that we don't have two fundraisers going on at the same time, so the cheerleading squad is not competing with the band at the same time, for the same dollars, from the same parents and the same families. So I believe that does exist. And I know that there has been some discussion about whether that is too restrictive, particularly if we have outside organizations that are doing matching during certain time periods, whether we need to take that into account. That may be more of an administrative guideline or practice than an actual policy, but it certainly could some, be something we could look at in that policy that relates to student donations. The other thing I did want to point out about policy GAI, that is new, that I, I do think, regardless of what you do in terms of the restriction, and, and these policies do allow for solicitations, but only with, with administrative approval. So that, that is in play. But the one, other one that we did add here is that employees are not allowed to solicit subordinate employees or students for personal, you know, sort of outside activities. That's the notion where if a student might feel pressured, or a student's family might feel, feel pressured to buy Girl Scout cookies from a teacher, you know, and think that if I don't buy them, my grade's going to be impacted, or my relationship with the teacher's going to be impacted, or subordinate employee, you know, is, you know, selling time share, whatever it might be. I do think that one's, that part of that's important, because that whole factors into a lot of your other policies that are trying to maintain professional relationships between students and faculty, and faculty and other faculty. So I do think that's an important component of what you have here. And again, all of this is designed to be not draconian in, in terms of the sense that you can't do it, but just to provide some oversight over the solicitation process.
Great, thank you. Additional que, uh, questions, comments? I believe there was a motion and a second for both, to accept for first read, both policy KDC and GAI. If there are no further questions, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, no.
Thank you.
So the motion was not approved for first read for those two policies. So we need to have, Greg, Mr. Gray, am I correct? We need to have four?
Yeah, you have to have vote, you have to have four yeses.
So since there were only three yeses, those policies are not approved, or not accepted. Thank you.
So can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
What happened? They just disappear, or do they come back?
That, so...
Like, just so...
Yeah, so at this point, they're not approved for first read, so they are no longer on a board agenda. If there's a request or desire to bring them back, or some version of them back, then they can be brought back for, again, for another first read at some point in the future. But they're not up for second read at the next board meeting. So these are essentially dead policies right now, unless somebody wants to bring them back and put them on the agenda in some fashion.
I would like to see us bring them back, maybe with a little bit more research. The other two members will be here, and we go from there, to just find out a little bit more information that could help.
Yeah, the, the Board always has discretion to put any policy you want on the agenda to be considered or discussed. And so it'd probably be appropriate, rather than bringing them back for a second first read, to actually bring those two policy items back for a discussion by the Board. And then from that discussion, we try to revamp the policies and bring them back for us, another first read freshly.
So until then, our current policy stands?
Correct.
Okay.
It, it, the current policy would have stood anyway, until you had a third read, so it doesn't change anything.
Okay.
But it sounds like there needs to be some board discussion, and as Ms. Page put it, that probably you want all your board members present.
Ms. Russell?
I was just going to say, I would support that. I, I think that allows myself, based on my concerns, to also, as staff are coming back, we can figure out what makes sense, and make sure that processes are understood. And I heard what was said, but I also want to do my due diligence as well, so I appreciate that.
So I would just ask, and we don't have to decide today, the, Ms. Page and Ms. Russell, if there are components that's missing, or the, what is needed, if you can communicate that to us, so we can get it to Greg, so that he can update it. And I will just say, more than likely, it won't be the next board meeting, just to give us time to give feedback, because, you know, staff will come back this week, but it's their first week back. So Ed, just tell us a few, what date you would like to bring it back, so Greg will have time to turn it around, or, and, or get the feedback.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that gives me heartburn is, is that a supervisor has the sole power to say yes or no to a request. And so what is, for the lack of a better word, the grievance process? To be able to say, I asked for this, they said no, but I feel that this is important. How do I, then, what is the process for then following up? So is it, do I reach out to Ms. Walker and say, hey, I requested this at the board level based on board policy, this person said no, I would like to make the argument that this still is? I think that's where I'm murky in the waters, about what that looks like.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, if there is additional feedback, please share that. And I, I like the idea of bringing it back for discussion, even after we make any potential adjustments based on feedback, so that we can discuss further before we accept her, or bring them back for a first read. Thank you, Board.
Last thing.
Yes.
Do you also see, I think she mentioned there was a clear process. Can you send the link, or the...
We'll clear, we will include that in the end of the week this week.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And for whatever it's worth, you do have a separate policy in here for grants as well. So the formal grant process is, it's different than this. This, this is...
The Amazon wishlist.
Yeah, these, these are... Yeah, these, these are the crowdfunding, the GoFundMe, the um, like I said, even down to like the, you know, the, 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 staff member that brings in the request for the Girl Scout cookies and tries to get everybody in the building to buy them. That's, that's what this is addressing.
But I couldn't ask you because the board said you're my subordinate, so now I can't ask you if you want to buy cookies?
Yeah, because if you.
Then you're left out.
Well, maybe, or, or maybe you feel pressured to buy the cookies because it's a subordinate asking, who's coming in and asking you to do it, and you don't really want to buy the cookies. So it's, it's, it is a dicey thing, but um, those power dynamics are real. And those power dynamics can be um, spot where somebody's put into, either as a subordinate employee or as a student who feels, or a family of a student who feels compelled to financially commit to something that's being asked of them by a person in a higher seat of power and that, and be problematic under a lot of your, your other policies and problematic for that individual put in that spot. So it's designed to prevent that from happening. I get it, I, I mean, you know, the Girl Scouts, cookie, cookies is a fairly innocuous example, obviously. Um, you know, the fundraiser for my kid's sports team, I, I come in and say, hey, my son's trying to raise money so his baseball team can travel this summer, and I walk that around the building and I get everybody to give me ten bucks. Doesn't sound like much, but that could be an imposition on some people. So I think it's, it, it's all worthy of discussion, what you ultimately decide to do, that's, that's what the board's here for.
And the other component of that is the wording of the ask. The, the employee is asking on behalf of the district, so that people think they are representative.
That's, that's, that's the, that's the public ask part of it, yeah. That's, that's where you've got the solicitation out there on social media somewhere saying, hey, I'm trying to raise money for the school. And if you're not, if that's not rimmed and run by administration or by the board, you could have somebody out fundraising for something that the board or administration either doesn't want them to do or has already provided funding for. Um, I think we've had that happen in the past, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, it happened last year.
Yeah, where the board had essentially approved funding for something, and then we separately had people that were out trying to fundraise for it, and that, that left some concern within the community. So I, it's, it's all discussion for the board. I mean, you guys decide how you want to handle this, but I think it is something you do, need to talk about, so.
Great, thank you, Mr. Goheen, thank you, Board. All right, our next item is item E. Um, Board, these are the two policies that have been accepted for a first read already. They are not up for a second read today, but rather for discussion and or feedback. These are policies J B C and J B C C regarding enrollment and enrollment of non-resident students. Mr. Goheen.
Yeah, so it, as the board will recall from the last meeting, these will not come back for a second read until you have a policy that the board is more or less um, in agreement on, because that second read has to be a public meeting for the public to be able to comment on these, these two policies. And so it's really back for discussion, there's not a time crunch in, in having that second read. I think they have to be adopted formally by the board before the end of the calendar year. I think it's January one or January fifth or something like that. But um, this is a place where the board needs to provide feedback in terms of what you want this to look like within the confines of what the statutes are going to require you to do in terms of allowing um, open enrollment for the district and what that's going to look like. So the, the policies that we have up there are just the raw ones that K S B has proposed. It will comply with the statute, there are options within these policies that are proposed, so their model policies are not like just one size fits all, so we can make modifications to them um, to some degree. Some of the things that I think are important to put in these policies that I didn't see in the draft, at least, I don't recall seeing them in there, are making it clear, for example, that if you're going to have students who opt to enroll from outside the district in this district as non-residents, that the district retains the right from a placement standpoint to put them in buildings where you have room. And you had the study, we walked through that yesterday, right? Some buildings are very crowded, so just because you have a student who's enrolling from outside the district in this school district, and just because we, we probably will have to accept that student in some fashion because we do have capacity, does not mean that that, that parent or that family gets to pick or decide necessarily what building they get to go to unless the board decides that you want to let them pick what building they want to go to. Those are the types of things that you guys need to give some direction to um, and talk about uh, before we get to that point of adopting the policy.
So this, with this being also in lieu of what's going to happen in August of 2024?
That is exactly what it's for. Yep, you're, you're deciding what your enrollment policy is going to be for next school year, is what you're deciding. And one component of that that didn't used to be there that now has to be there is you have to have a open enrollment to some degree. Based upon your facility availability and stuff like that, capacity.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah, so I, I think, to the, thank you, Greg, to the place that I would like for us to get is for us to have a conversation around policy around the permit process for residential students. I would want our residential students to be able to have um, priority in what buildings they are attending before we are opening it up to non-residential students to have some, if the way the board goes is, is that um, you know, based on, I guess the law says, if there's capacity, students can attend that school. So just clarity on that permit process. I know we currently have a process that's more practice and procedure versus an actual permit policy. The second piece that I think I am bringing up from about five or six years ago, um, when we talk about student-centered approaches to, or student-centered um, plans, is the academy transfer policy we talked about, or the board talked about previously. If I have an interest area at a high school that's somewhere else and it's not offered at my high school, I think it's still similar to the, the permit process transfer option. But I think what does that, um, how does that impact and play a role? Um, some things are offered because of the proximity of where K C K C C is and how much time it would take, how far something is from another place. And so I think just really clarifying what those two thing, what direction the board would like to go as it relates to those two things. Do we want kids transferring because of they want a different academy option? And then what does our internal residential capacity look like based on feeder information, what have you? So those are the two things that I think before I can get to what to do with non-resident students, I just want to make sure we have, we're in agreement and clear as a board of where we want to go with those two things, so.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Additional thoughts on, on this? And I would look to Dr. Stubblefield, um, and we don't have to necessarily have the conversation tonight, but around the two questions that Ms. Russell has asked around regarding the permit process and policy, and what does that look like currently? And maybe we can share that with the full board, um, so that we can all have, make sure we all are clear and understand what that current process looks like. And then the transfer for cur, for resident, for current students. What does that process look like, um, and how do we practice that consistently? Or do, what does that look like throughout the district as well?
Yeah, and I think in that, I'm, one program that I know is R O T C. Like if you, that's only offered at Washington, and so there's a process for students to transfer from other places to go to R O T C. So I think previously, I wasn't here, I don't know all of the pieces of it. There was discussion about that same similar approach being at other things, so that was my thought process with that.
Thank you, yeah, so if I think, if we can get some of that information to the full board, that would help. Are there other additional pieces of, or items, information that would be helpful for the board? As we look to discuss this. So I'm not seeing or hearing any, I think, um, Board is, as we continue to work through this, again, Greg, by, what's the, the timeframe that this needs to be adopted?
You have to have, basically December. You have to, you're going to have to have something adopted in that December meeting, uh, which means, or, or really maybe even the November one, because it has to be, your policy has to be in place into the calendar year for next year. And to get the public hearing in, you're probably looking at the public hearing in October to make, you only have that one meeting in November, so I think it'd be dicey to try to have you guys having the public hearing in that November meeting and then trying to adopt it in December. I think it'd be smarter trying to have the public hearing in October. That give you two months in case you had issues that you had to address following the public meeting, and gives you a little bit of a gap in case you needed a second public meeting.
Thank you. So Board, I would encourage you to, again, take a look at the policies, really dig through them. If there are any questions or additional information that would be helpful for you um, to have a, a more thorough conversation, I think it would also, um, you know, we can, unless there's anything else pressing you want to share tonight, we can hold off um, until um, the rest of our, our two other board members are with us so that they can be part of the conversation. But as you're reviewing this, if there's more information that would help you um, to have more conversation or see things you want to see changed in those draft policies, please bring those forward. Yes, Ms. Russell?
I guess I also, now hearing the timeline, would also just wonder if it would be worth having a special meeting dedicated to working toward, without having to make board meetings more lengthier? Because I think when you get down to the policy parts of it, it, I mean, there are some decisions that have to be made that both have financial impact, and how do we outline that for everyone in a way that's helpful? So, that's my thought.
Thank you.
I, I will say, and I'm pulling it up, I believe the October 12th meeting, because we have um, looked at board reports, there is not a report scheduled for that meeting, and we could kind of protect that meeting to dedicate to policy, and I could make sure that staff, we're working backwards and we're not bringing other things that would cause lengthy discussions or compete with it. I don't know, like, on the facility master plan, um, where they will be, but that's something, that's something we can look at before we add a special meeting. There are a few meetings where we don't have a report scheduled.
Thank you for that suggestion. Okay, if there's no other feedback on those two policies currently, we will continue forward with our agenda. Thank you, Board, thank you, Mr. Goheen, for that feedback, thank you for the conversation, Board. Next item are our executive sessions, um, so we can dismiss any staff that are not a part of these sessions. And I would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel nor protect privacy interests of parties involved under coma for five minutes, going in at seven thirty.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions? Ms. Smith, roll call please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for joining us tonight.
And staff, um, with the exception of um, Ms. Devon and Dr. Campbell, you're free to go, because I don't think Steve. Because I don't think Steve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I didn't hear.
Moved by Ms. Humphries and seconded by Ms. Drew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Janie.
Janie Humphries.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell.
Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're back in open session. Would entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation on, with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma going in for five minutes at 7:39.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Humphries, seconded by Ms. Drew. Ms. Smith?
You said 7:39 for five minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie.
Janie Humphries. Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, motion to return to open session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Humphries, seconded by Ms. Drew. Ms. Smith?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, would now entertain a motion to recess to executive session for consultation with the attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma for 10 minutes going in at 7:46.
Janie moves.
I seconded.
You seconded? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.